Okay, we are recording, live streaming to Facebook. The meeting is yours.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will call this special meeting of the Board of Finance to order. We'll start with the roll call of members. Myself, Tim O'Brien is on. Glenn Freshman, are you on?
Here.
Mike Farbach?
Here.
Lynn Young?
Here.
Bob Statchen?
Here.
Deb Norman?
Here.
And Dave Motherway?
Here.
Jim Sullivan, you're also on, yes?
Here.
And Jill Senior is here, taking care of us as usual.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, excellent. There, we'll now open for comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on. Previous minutes. We're gonna go one by one, so can I get a motion to approve the March 4th? Motion to approve the March 4th minutes that were submitted?
So moved. Glenn Freshman.
And a second?
Second, Lynn Young.
Any discussion on the March 4th minutes? That were the edited minutes, but the comments said it. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please state so and state your name. Those minutes are unanimously accepted. All right, can I get a motion for the March 10th minutes amended, that were amended?
So moved. Mike.
Mike Farbach with a motion. Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Yeah, I got Glenn Freshman with a second. Any discussion on the March 10th minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving them as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Those minutes are unanimously accepted. Next, can I get a motion for the April 9th minutes that were submitted?
So moved.
Second, Lynn.
Bob, was that you who made the motion? Okay, motion from Bob Statchen, second from Lynn, any discussion on April 9? Any discussion there? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name and your opposition. Those minutes are unanimously accepted. Can I get a motion for the April 29th minutes to approve them?
Moved to approve. It's Lynn.
Motion from Lynn, do I have a second?
Second, Deb Norman.
Deb Norman with a second, any discussion on April 29th?
Yeah, this is Lynn. I would actually like to work on those substantially, so I prefer not to vote on them tonight if it's possible.
Okay, so we will take the motion back.
I made it for the discussion, so.
Yeah, so we can table, why don't we table the April 29th minutes? Until the next meeting? Yeah, I need a motion for that.
Motion tabled.
Second, Lynn.
Glenn with a motion, Lynn with a second, any, any opposition, I'll say it that way, to tabling the minutes for the April 29th? None, okay, that unanimously passes, we will table those minutes. Now, can I get a motion to approve the May 6th minutes?
So moved.
Motion from Bob, can I get a second for May 6?
Glenn Freshman, second.
Any discussion on the May 6th meeting minutes? Any discussion on May 6? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving them, say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name and your opposition. Hearing none, those minutes are unanimously passed. Can I have a motion for, to approve the minutes of the May 12th Joint Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen meeting?
Mike, so moved.
Motion by Mike, can I get a second?
Deb Norman, second.
Deb Norman with a second, any discussion on the May 12th joint meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, state your name and that you are opposed. Hearing none, those minutes are unanimously, unanimously accepted. We're almost done, folks, two more. Can I get a motion for the June 3rd, to approve the June 3rd minutes?
Glenn Freshman, so moved.
A second.
Motion Glenn, Bob Statchen with the second, any discussion on the June 3rd meeting minutes? That was the one, yeah, that's the one. Sandy, my only point on that one, we technically didn't, I said that we adjourned the meeting when we were going into the executive session, but we really didn't. We took the motion to go into the executive session, and then we had to come out because we had the 4:30 meeting. And we came out and adjourned in the next, in the next meeting because we couldn't do everything at one time, and then we had to come back for the other one. Can we just clean up that we didn't adjourn it? We adjourned. Does that make sense?
Yes, I will remove, the meeting was adjourned, and I'll just say that you went into executive session.
And then you can just say the meeting was adjourned at 4:30 PM, because we ended it there to go to the other meeting that we had.
Okay.
So that'll, that'll clean it up from my standpoint, that's fine. Any other, any other points for the June 3rd? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, those are unanimously passed as well. And then, the final ones for now are the, can I get a motion for the June 3rd Joint Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen WPCA minutes to be approved?
So moved.
Deb Norman with the motion, who, can I get a second, please?
Glenn Freshman, second.
Glenn Freshman with the second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, those minutes unanimously carry. Okay, that is all the minutes I have for now. Jill, do you agree that that's all, we've covered all the minutes?
Um, we just.
Do we have June 23rd?
Yeah.
We skipped June 23rd.
Yeah, there's the last one that, that was emailed out.
Oh, I didn't, I'm looking at one email to make sure I didn't miss any of them. Okay.
Yep, no, it was an additional one, it was emailed out this morning.
Yep.
From the 23rd.
You're exactly right. Okay, can I get a motion for the, to approve the minutes of the June 23rd Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance joint meeting?
So moved, Lynn.
I'll second.
Second, Glenn.
So I got a motion from Lynn Young and a second from Mike Farbach. Is there any discussion on those meeting minutes? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, those minutes unanimously pass. Now we are done with minutes. Next item of business is the new business is tax deferment requests. I emailed you out about an hour ago, the latest version that I had received from the tax collector, where about 270,000, just under $270,000 worth of potential tax revenue has been asked, been applied to be deferred, and about 78,500 worth of sewer taxes to be deferred. I just asked yesterday, or today was the last day that that could be approved, or applied for, rather. So I just wanted to get people an idea of what it looks like. Linda was not, in talking with her, was not, she was, it could have been a lot worse in her opinion, there could have been a lot more people looking for tax deferment. Now comes the point of the next part of the question of what kind of collection rates we see. And really, this one may not be the worst, it may be the next one coming in, in January, but at least it gives us a snapshot of what's going on in the town right now. Any other board, oh, and I keep forgetting to say this, make sure you identify yourself by name when you talk, so that we can get the minutes right, and, because we're doing it virtually. Does anyone else have any comments or observations or questions about the tax deferments there?
Tim, it's Mike, and this may be a question directly for Linda, but I'm just curious, totally, you provided a moment ago, there are a couple of corporate entities that, you know, are, end up being a chunk of that. And, you know, we have a dialogue going with, with them in terms of some sort of settlement schedule, or, just at this point, we regress the deferral and kind of hope for the best. And again, maybe it's a question for Linda, not, not you, but.
I, I can say that Linda told me she's had dialogues with all of these applicants. And the deferral doesn't matter if you're a corporate entity or a, or an individual taxpayer. You're, you get the deferral till September, so, beginning of September with no interest or penalty. If you didn't apply but didn't pay, you get the standard 6% penalty compounds there. So they, they have until September 1st to defer this, and they're all deferred till that time. It's not a, I mean, you can pay it early if you want, but you can, you can go to the end with no problems. That will be the next point also, Mike, to kind of answer yours is, and then I forget, you know, I don't have in front of me the schedule, because I think it was a phased, I think if you paid it before January, it was at a reduced penalty percentage rate. And then January, it reverted back to the 6%. So.
Right, Tim, this is Danielle, if you want, just for the record, for the minute, it's October 1st, not September 1st.
Oh, okay, I'm really good.
And also, Linda, Linda is trying to encourage everyone to do payment plans, so they're not caught off guard. But yeah, Mike, she could follow up with you tomorrow to share if anyone's taken her up on that yet, and set up any payment plans. But I know she has had that conversation with everyone.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
This is Lynn, I don't know which corporations did this, but most corporations will manage to cash flow. So, you know, it's a freebie, they're gonna do it whether they need it or not. So we really won't know what it means until, you know, the day the check comes due.
Yeah. What I do want to be a little careful is, is that we don't name who individuals or corporations are that have done this, just that we've got a total number.
All right, I totally understand. But it's not, what I'm trying to say is, it's not surprising that a corporation would do that, it doesn't mean anything. They would manage to cash flow, or at least if I were running it, I would.
Yeah. Agreed.
Well, Lynn, this is Jim Sullivan, just to clarify, they should not be doing that just to manage cash flow, they, it really should be need-based. And they had, they had to sign an affidavit to that effect, so.
No, I know, but, you know, they're all, they're all having business trouble and whatnot. So what I'm trying to say is, even if you could pay it, you know, if you can manufacture the need, you won't pay it until it's.
I'll agree with that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on the tax deferment here? All right, we'll move on to, the next item of business is bid waiver requests. We have a request from the Solid Waste Manager for bid waiver to purchase a 2019 demo Freightliner truck. Jim, remind me, technically from the meeting, should we get a motion to approve it and a second, and then have the discussion with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the bid waiver from the Solid Waste Manager for the 2019? Glenn Freshman with the motion, can I get a second, please?
A second now.
Bob Statchen with the second. Now, Stacy, are you guys still on?
Yeah, and we're here with John.
Yeah.
John's there too, right, okay. John, do you want to go over this one?
Yeah, I, I think everybody has a sheet that I give showing you the kind of cost comparison. This started because I was seeking a trade-in value for the truck. And Freightliner Hartford turned down to give us, to take a look at our current roll-off to give me a price, and mentioned that they had a leftover. It's basically a demo truck. So he brought that down, and it's pretty much the truck we currently have with a semi-automatic transmission. It's a really nice truck, it has about 2,500 miles on it. Companies do is they basically order up a truck to use as a sample, they drive it around for whoever wants to look at a truck, and that's what they order from. I, I didn't, normally that doesn't happen, so I was surprised. So then I, I actually called around and I went to the other Freightliner in Bradford, got a similar price for a similar truck. And then basically thought, you know, in both cases, these trucks had a couple thousand miles on them. No, no work being done really, just people driving them. They both had semi-automatics, which typically I don't order because it's an additional cost. We usually just get a standard transmission. And then that third price, the price on the bottom was, if I were to spec out the truck we have now, which is what I would do with a, a standard transmission, that's what the current price off the state bid list would be. So the first Freightliner and the last Freightliner are off-state bid pricing. The leftover and the new truck, the New England Truck Sales Freightliner is not state bid priced, it was just whatever price they gave us for their leftover. There's really almost no difference between the two demo trucks, they both have the same amount of miles. The advantages on the first one was they gave me an additional two-year warranty, which is a pretty good dollar value. They gave me a much better trade-in value. But it's ultimately the same truck. The New England truck did not have a cover, which is close to a $9,000 cost. So you'd have to add another $9,000 on to that in order for us to, to purchase that truck. And so, when I take a look at what the difference between the new truck and the leftover, I'm certainly recommending we buy the leftover. There's, there's no real trade-in value to the, the years. I tried to actually get him to take a little off, because the, the truck was a 2019, like you would expect with a car. But they don't really price trucks like this based on the year as much as the hours and the miles. So, in, in this case, I couldn't get him to budget any more on the price, because it was very, you know, I felt, gee, compared to a brand-new truck, it's some money, but I thought I could maybe get a little more, I wasn't successful. I even tried to get them to throw in just a, maybe a clutch warranty in addition, and they still wouldn't do it. But I'm pretty happy with the number they gave us. If, if we go with the first truck, I'd be returning to you about $8,000. If, if I went off the state bid, I'd need, I'd need an additional 8,000. And frankly, I didn't see an advantage to the, the middle truck, so. I don't know if anybody has questions, or if I've been clear.
Any board members have questions for John?
No, it's crystal clear.
Thank you.
All right, given that there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, that unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have a bid waiver request from the Director of Public Works to engage SK Mechanical. Can I get a motion to approve the bid waiver for Public Works for SK Mechanical for the West Broad Street Boiler for $17,000?
Deb Norman, so moved.
Motion Deb, can I get a second, please?
Glenn Freshman, second.
Motion from Deb Norman, second from Glenn and Freshman. Now we'll do discussion, and Tom, I believe you're on the phone?
Yes, it's Tom Curio, so Barbara's unable to call in tonight. So I think the memo you have in front of you explains how this kind of arrived. We inherited the boiler from the Board of Ed, and it had one crack section. And what happened is, the other, as the repair, the initial repair took place, they found out that it was some faulty work that had been done to it, and that the other section had been over-torked. And they call them intermediary sections, so it's a seven-section boiler. The first one was cracked, we thought we would get away with just replacing that section, put everything back together, and it would work properly. Turned out that the center sections were cracked as well, from the gaskets, which they thought was from the over-talking. So there's a couple of options in front of you. It's a full replacement of the boiler, which is gonna be about $12,000 more than the repair. So for $17,000, so what we're asking for is that we can just replace the additional sections. And the warranty is exactly the same. So if we were to put a brand-new boiler in there, soup to nuts, it'll be 10 years on the castings. And if we replace the sections, it'll be 10 years on the castings. And from their interpretation, diagnosis, what was left there, all the other components look good. The burner's been replaced, the coil's been replaced, a lot of the outside components have been replaced. So basically, we would be putting tin work around just these sections and the components that we already have. So it seemed like the best way to go, and the best option financially.
Thanks, Tom, are there any questions from board members?
It's a lot of feedback. Tom, who's, who over-torqued it?
I don't know who the Board of Ed had doing the initial installation of that boiler, it's a Smith boiler, it's Smith 19. I don't know the company. It could have been EMCOR, in the past, I know the town authorities used EMCOR for a lot of their maintenance and installations. We've had good luck with SK Mechanical, they are the ones who do the human services, the units that were put in there with all the heating problems that we had. And so far, so good with those. There's been very few things that have gone wrong, and they've seemed to run well. So we, it's kind of what we prefer them, and they're willing to work with us, and the boiler is in pieces now, except for the section on, that's in the front. They were patient to stand by with us while we got the approval. And I believe Barbara came in front of the board in the April meeting, and did a line item transfer from snow removal money that was excess of the budget, so that the funding would be there. I think the amount was 23,600, which included the boiler repair, the additional 17,000, plus general operations that were required for the West Broadway School building.
So you don't think that we have any recourse to whoever wrecked this?
I asked the actual technician that, and I asked the owner at SK Mechanical, he did not think so. It's, it's required is about 30 pounds of torque, I guess, to push these sections together. They estimated that it was double that.
All right, so we got Hercules that day?
You got Hercules that day.
Okay.
Other questions from board members? Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Roger, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, that motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, the next item of business, we have line item transfers. Police Department line item request for fiscal 1920, we have five attached. Can I get a motion to approve the line item transfers, please?
Glenn Freshman, so moved.
Thank you.
Motion from Glenn Freshman, second from Mike Farbach. Jim, do you want to go over this at all, or?
Well, I'll just ask if anybody has any specific questions, they look pretty straightforward to me, this presentation, so does anybody have any specific questions that I might be able to answer?
It's pretty straightforward, relatively low dollar amount.
Yeah.
Yeah. The biggest one would be building maintenance, and I know what, you know, Darren would say, every time he touches on the age of the building, that he's, you know, that, that, that line item just keeps getting bigger and bigger each year, so.
Any other questions? Or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, that unanimously passes for those line item transfer approvals. Next item of business, additional appropriations. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we've had any, correct?
That's correct, they still stand at 77,000 for the year from a few months ago.
Okay. So nothing to do on that. Next item of business is review the Board of Ed monthly line item transfers and global budget report. We got the reports again. They, again, don't say very much that you can discern. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments about them.
Remember, comments, I mean, I mean, I saw the report, we saw the, the April report. I, I am very curious to see the end of fiscal year, the June report, to see what specific transfers were, were made at the end of the year. I'd also be very curious as to, which of those were discussed and approved by the Board of Ed. I know, I know, that was advice that we were providing back to the Board of Ed members through our dialogue, that, you know, I feel like that, that would hopefully happen. I'd be very, very curious to see that report and have those questions answered, once available.
Mike, Mike, this is Jim, I would be surprised if they did any transfers as of June 30. I would expect, you know, any year-end cleanup would be done sometime during July.
Oh, you don't think it'll be till July, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever it is that they're doing, yeah, they're, they're doing the year cleanup.
Any other questions from board members or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Correspondence, I do not have any correspondence, Jill or Jim, do you have anything?
I do not.
Neither do I.
Okay, no correspondence. Liaison report, Library Subcommittee report, we will.
Tim, are we gonna do the, on the, the line item transfers for the Board of Ed? Did we look at, oh, those, that encompasses both the documents, both the global one? Okay, I wasn't sure, because the global one is sort of the overall report, but this one, the, the additional document is specific ones.
Those are specific ones that are from the, generated from the school to the Board of, yeah.
Okay, I apologize, I, I thought that was gonna be a different discussion, but, but if I could just ask on that, it doesn't, we don't have, we don't have signatures from the superintendent or the Board of Ed, somewhat going back to Mike's point about having the Board of Ed review these. And so these transfers that are coming in don't indicate that they've been looked at either by the superintendent or the Board of Ed. Is there, do we know whether that's the standard operating procedure, that they don't sign off on these?
Since we have started receiving the transfers. Since we have started receiving the transfers, um, I have never seen a signature. This, this is a standard, this is the standard that I have seen.
And is it, should we ask why, why, I mean, there's a form, there's a place for the Superintendent to indicate, there's a place for the Board of Ed to, should that be a question? I mean, we're not, should that be a question we're asking?
Bob, this is Jill.
Yeah.
Um, I get these, I pull these off of the Board of Education webpage. This is what they place up there, and I print them out. This is what they have for documentation.
Okay, so they're not, so is there, I mean, should we be asking if there's any process for getting the transfers approved by the Board of Education? And this, this would be a question if we attached this to a, a question saying, you know, that the transfers do not appear to be approved by either the Superintendent or the Board of Ed. Again, as we're trying to increase transparency and increase the, the process, visibility on the process, is that, is that a fair question, or am I missing something?
Well, Bob, Bob, this is Jim Sullivan, and I'll compare and contrast it to what we do. Um, as Jill said, she's pulling these off of the, the minutes for that, that month's, that month's, um, meeting. So going into the meeting, this would probably be the document that they're talking about at that meeting. Um, and then either the, talking just about the Board of Education, they would probably approve it or not approve it at that particular meeting, so you wouldn't see their signature on it, on this document anyways. Perhaps after the meeting, it's signed then. What we do at the town, and I, I can't address the, when the Superintendent should sign it. From the town's perspective, our line item transfers, to go to meeting, I, I, the Director of Finance sign off, and I have the first selectwoman sign off, Danielle, before going to the Board of Ed, somebody, before going to the Board of Finance, which in this case, I would liken to the Board of Education. So there's no signature on it at that time when it goes to your meeting. What I do is I just put the date on it that it was approved, then I initial it on your behalf to show that you, it was approved at that, that time and date.
I'll throw out a question. I mean, I think there would be value if we're including these in the minutes of our meetings. These are dated back in February. Is there, would it be possible for us to get the final documents of these to be reflected in our minutes rather than, um, rather than uncompleted copies?
All right, going forward, we'll see if we can get, you know, copies after the fact instead of pulling them off of the, that particular month's meeting agenda.
I think, again, I think we're trying to move forward on this transfer process and understanding it better. And so it does seem to, to, for me at least, to have documents in there that have, that have been fully executed seems to be a step in, in the right direction for that, but I'm certainly open if anybody has any, any...
Bob, I fully agree. I mean, that, that was the point I was getting at earlier with the year-end. You know, I'd like to know which, which of those were signed off on by the Board of Ed. So, yeah, if we can see, uh, the, the fully, fully signed docs, uh, particularly with, uh, that year-end reconciliation, that, that would be great. So, yeah, maybe, yeah, Jim or Jill, you guys could just reach out to whoever supports the Board of Ed and if we can get those.
Good, thank you.
Will do.
Okay. Back to liaison reports, uh, Library Subcommittee, nothing, nothing going on there. Uh, Jill, I think...
Tim, hold on for a second, because in the previous minutes, we just approved, and in the meeting itself, we had decided to disband that thing, so there is no one Library Subcommittee.
I, I was just about to say that, Lynn, so, um, so if we can just make sure we take that off of the, uh, future minutes, because we did disband that at the last meeting.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Um, simply liaison report, there's nothing going on there either. Um, WPCA, Lynn, anything new you want to?
No, it's been happily non-catastrophic, so good about that. We just have that next meeting coming up to fix the bond resolution, and then we go to market, I guess. So that's it.
Yep, and I heard back from most of you that you'll be able to make the, uh, the meeting coming up that we just set. And so we'll have a quorum for sure. Um, and just to clarify, to make sure every member is clear, we just had to put in, uh, one extra resolution and clarification, uh, so that it was clear under what governor's executive order this was done at. So none of the intent nor the, um, nor the, uh, mechanism changed. It's just making it clear, but we do need to go back and have another meeting to, uh, approve the final version of the bond resolution, uh, and that's what we'll be doing, uh, next week.
I have a question for Jim Sullivan, which is, it's Lynn, Jim. Um, the question is, is this, do them, does the bond resolution or anything that we've done have any kind of an interest rate collar on it?
No, because the, once you're done, we'll go out to bid, so that's when you're going to find out what the interest rate is.
Right, but, so, you know, we factor in like 1.75 and just for the sake of yucks, the market collapses between here and then. So, you know, it costs us four and a half to, to do it. What would be the mech, what would happen then?
Well, you can, if, if you didn't want to pay, you could refuse.
Well, we could, but who makes that decision?
It would be the, uh, myself, the first selectwoman, and probably, uh, Board of Finance Chair.
Okay. That was my question.
Any other questions about that from anybody? No? All right, Board of Ed Liaison Report. Um, I will say that I got an email this morning from the Board of Ed Chair. Let me just pull it in front of me here. Uh, stating that at their meeting last night of the Board of Ed, they formed a reopening task force. Uh, it will include members of the Stonington community, and they have invited a member of the Board of Finance to serve on this committee. Uh, the first meeting will be in a week, today. Um, and the reopening plan needs to be provided to the state by July 24th. So this committee will have some things to do and not a lot of time to do them in. Um, and I have asked Glenn as the Board of Ed Liaison to attend the first meeting. I'll be out of town, uh, for that meeting, and we'll see, uh, how that goes with, uh, that committee. I don't know. It's going to be a lot of getting up to speed pretty quickly. I don't know if anyone else has anything to, um, add for the Board of Ed Liaison?
I'll add a prayer.
Yeah. We'll need it.
Well, with a, with a novena, uh, that ends that, and I don't have any other liaison reports. Uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Glenn Freshman, so moved.
I got Bob Statian with the motion and Glenn Freshman with the second, okay?
Tim, you're going to send me the, the final time, the 8th? Is it going to be a virtual, uh, in...
Glenn, I'll get you in touch with them so that they can help organize everything.
That'll be wonderful. I'll look forward to getting an email.
I will be sending it momentarily.
Yeah. Take care.
All right, thanks, everybody.